We will call the meeting to order.
What?
Rock Valley, Rock Valley College Board of Trustees, Community College District 511, regular board meeting, August 27th, 5:15. We have a call to order, please.
Kudia.
I should say, Roca.
Yes. Kudia. Nelson.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Simpson. Gorski.
Do I have a choice? If I don't say yes, can I leave and you cancel me? I'll say yes, go ahead.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes, here.
We have enough for a quorum.
For the record, Gloria will not be in attendance. She's in Las Vegas. Crystal Soltau is homesick with her family. And I think Kristen will be 10 minutes late or so.
Oh, Kito.
Okay. Any board member attendance by means other than physical presence? I don't think so, no one's asked.
No.
Communication petitions, any public comment?
No public comments.
Any visitors to be recognized?
No visits to be recognized.
How about any general presentations?
No general presentations.
Whoa.
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9th committee of the whole and the July 23rd regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Gorski motion and Nelson second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Michaels.
Aye.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, next item, first one under H, H1, approve the claim sheet, check registered July 2024, BR 8186. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion Gorski. Second Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
No.
Michaels.
Aye.
Gorski.
Uh, yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next item is approve purchase reports, number one, purchase report A, fiscal 2025 amendments, BR 8187-A. Your motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Gorski, motion.
I second.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Uh, yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next item is purchase report B, fiscal year 2025, purchases, BR 8187-B.
So moved, I'd like to speak to it.
Motion Gorski. Second Kennedy.
May I speak to it?
You have two people want to speak to it. John, you want to speak?
Uh, yes, I wasn't here for the committee of the whole meeting, as most of you know, I was in the country of Norway. But do I see this right that, oh, never mind. The Northern Illinois Service Company is demolishing the buildings downtown for the new, our new building, which I understand is on hold.
Yes, sir, Northern Illinois Service Company.
All right. That's it for me.
Any other?
Yeah, were there changes to this one?
What was that, Paul?
Were there any changes?
Any changes?
We have the red line version behind it.
Right.
To pull the underlock out so that it's purchase report C.
Right.
Other than that, because of that ripple effect, there are smaller changes in numbers, but that's it.
But that item, yeah, was pulled out and then created a new purchase report in this agenda C, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'm not a big fan of Florida, but is there any particular reason that this got pulled?
Underlock?
Yeah.
Yes, you want to explain it or you want me? So during the committee of the whole, Trusty Gorski felt this was not the appropriate use of an exemption. And we shared this with you when we checked with our attorneys, Robin Schwartz, they felt it was an appropriate use of an exemption. They did not provide an opinion during the committee of the whole, so we thought that the best thing to do was to pull it out, separate it out, so we had time to look into it and it could be voted on separately.
Yeah, trustee Nelson, I was concerned that an item this large, whether or not it was subject to the exemption or not, would still have gone out for bid and we still would have been offered an opportunity to take a look at things like that. My specific concern was, I didn't think, I thought it met the threshold where you would have to go out for bid and even for certain things, because I really don't see this as being data conversion and the like, it's more of a, it's a, it's a service, so, and that's why I wanted to pull it out, because I will be voting against C just because I don't think it's been properly processed, so.
You might want to hold off on that then, Bob, till Kristen gets here.
Hold off until when?
When Kristen gets here.
Maybe table it to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, we will table it.
But right now, we're talking about B.
Not table, but delay the vote.
You're moving the item, you're moving purchase report C to later point.
Right.
Do we have to say that aloud?
We're going to move item C to a later time in the meeting when we have other board members present.
Okay, thank you. So I call the question on B.
So have we voted on purchase report B and that's what he says?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
We need a roll call on B.
Yes, sir. Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, next item is to approve the resolution of intent to call for a bond issue notification act, BINA, public hearing, including working cash bonds not to exceed $14,700,000 with the proceeds of a debt obligation, item number BR 8188.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion Gorski, second Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay. The next item, we're going to do three, and I have to read them all. First is approve the dual and articulated credit memorandum of understanding for Meridian, CUSD, number 223, item BR 8189, also for Boone, CUSD, number 200, item BR 8190, and Winnebago, CUSD, number 323, BR 8191. Any motion to approve?
I make motion to approve.
Second.
Gorski and Nelson. Gorski motion, Nelson second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next, we will vote on two items, approve running start intergovernmental agreement with North Boone, CUSD, number 200, item BR 8192, and Winnebago, CUSD, number 323, item number BR 8193.
I motion.
Gorski, motion.
No, 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 no.
Sorry? Michael.
I said it, I said it.
I'll second it, though.
Gorski second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Yes. Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next item is to approve senior semester intergovernmental agreement with North Boone, CUSD, number 200, item BR 8194.
So moved.
Nelson motioned.
I second.
Michael second. Are you seconding, Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Nelson and Michael. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next item is to approve the personnel report, number BR 8195. Any motion?
I motion.
Motion, Michael. Michael?
Second.
Nelson? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll take a roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next item is to approve the college bookstore contract, number BR 8196. Any?
Motion.
Michael motioned.
Second.
And Gorski second. Any discussion? Yes, sir, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to vote against this motion, not because I don't think that a thorough job was done investigating and making a recommendation as to who should assume the work of operating our bookstore, but because I want to impress on the board that there are certain policy decisions that I feel the board has overlooked in the past and continues to overlook, and it's necessary for the board to be able to vote on things like this, and we're doing it backwards in this case, because this should have brought, in my, been brought, in my opinion, to the board first, and I don't think we, my vote would have been to maintain the bookstore in the fashion in which we have it, and there are many reasons for that. But what I want to impress on the board is, we have to be more assertive and keep an eye on the idea that the board sets policy and the administration implements that policy. And we're the what and they're the how. And I would say that the idea of our past chairman, Bob, and I'm not including you in this, have green lighted certain policy decisions and then the president has gone ahead and implemented them, but that's not the way it's supposed to work, and I think And I think that, that my thoughts may well have some teeth in them fairly soon, as I anticipate a lawsuit with a, another one of our community colleges is in the offing for this very reason. So I will vote no.
Yes, sir, Paul?
So the, we're moving forward, this is for a virtual and hybrid, this is a.
Right.
Now, in terms of the hybrid, so that, it means partially on premises, right?
It's fully on premise.
Fully? Okay, well, I mean, so, and I was trying to explain this to trustee Nelson, I mean, some books are already kind of purchased, you know, online and like anyway, so what would change in terms of the bookstore square footage on campus? That's one question.
Sorry, I believe the footprint of the bookstore will not change.
Okay.
The vendor will come in if, if this moves forward, the vendor that's been recognized by the committee as the preferred vendor for this contract, they would come in, spend about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars refurbishing the facility and the current footprint of that space and operate a full bookstore similar to the operation that's currently in place.
Second question?
With enhanced online options.
Second question is the, are the people staffing this physical bookstore, college employees or the vendors' employees?
Historically, they've been vendor employees, and that would be, I believe, the relationship going forward, they would be employees of the vendor.
Okay.
Yes, sir, John?
Uh, I, I want to follow up on that. So what you're representing, Dr. Pryor, is that the current employees are not going to lose their jobs, is that, do I have that accurately? And I, I put it fairly bluntly, so there's just no question about how, how the answer comes out.
That's, that's a new question, that I don't believe that was the question that Mr. Gorski asked, but the understanding I have from the vendors that all presented to us in the last couple of months was that their general practices that they offer employment opportunities to the current staff if they're interested in working for the new vendor. And they would be offered interviews in a process.
We don't control that.
We have no authority over who they hire or how they hire them.
Who was the old vendor?
Currently, it's Barnes and Noble.
Okay.
And?
Is it, Paul?
And are the current employees a part of a bargaining unit then?
The current employees, I have no idea, they work for Barnes and Noble.
Oh, they work for Barnes and Noble.
They are Barnes and Noble employees, they are not.
We'd just be switching vendors.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Which is no different than any of the restaurants that we have or the coffee shop we have, we contract with the vendor, not the employees of the vendor.
Great.
So, John, just to be clear, you mentioned this was a policy violation, could you explain what you mean?
Well, certainly. Bob, I, you know, I go to the bookstore and I buy stuff, and it, it was my understanding that our, Rock Valley College was, you know, controlled the bookstore, and I don't know how long Barnes and Noble has been there, but it's, whether or not to change vendors, in my opinion, is a policy decision. Once we say yes, it's up to Dr. Spearman to come back with a recommendation, and so I'm not saying that Dr. Spearman didn't investigate thoroughly, I think he did, but, you know, my bone to pick is that the board should have been advised first, and, and this isn't where you, you run it by the chairman of the board, okay, away we go.
Yes, we did have the presentation at the Cow meeting, the last Cow meeting.
Well, I, I wasn't there, Bob.
Well, but then it doesn't really reflect the change of policy, or, not a change, but violation of policy, Paul?
I would, I, I know where John's going with this, and I think it, part of it might be, and maybe I'm wrong, is a, not understanding the current arrangement. The current arrangement is Barnes and Noble runs the bookstore.
Right.
Okay, and right now, and they have books in the store, and some books are still online, right?
Correct.
So we're not changing the online or the physical footprint part of it, we're just changing who's administering, you know, the part of it. So we're not changing the overall program, but we're changing the vendor that executes the program. If it was a program change, it might side with my friend and fellow trustee, John, and, you know, in terms of a policy thing, but it, we're keeping it same format, just different player.
Changing the vendor.
Just different.
And as I recall, we had six or seven different vendor proposals that you presented to us last month, and you made the selection.
Now, if we went to all online, that would be a change.
This is a hybrid.
Right.
To be clear. And the footprint, physical footprint's the same.
Right.
And it's not our employees, so. Any other discussion?
If it's appropriate, I, I did do a presentation for the board back in January about the process beginning and reviewing of the vendors that were coming.
So the board has been informed that this study was going on, and so here we are.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Do we have, let's see, we have a motion and we have a second, can we have a roll call, please?
I motion.
It's already been done, sir.
Just a roll call now. Yes, Michael, Michael motion and, who's, who's seconding, John?
No, no, I think it was Paul.
Paul's second.
Nelson?
No.
Michaels?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, now we're going to come back to the purchase report C.
Okay.
Fiscal year 2025 purchases, number B R eight one eight seven dash C, and as we noted earlier, we had a discussion at the Cow meeting based on Paul Gorski's commentary, so we pulled it out as a separate item, and since you were not here for this vote, we decided to delay it, so now we're bringing it back for a vote, and it needs a motion and it needs a second.
I would make a motion and I'd like to speak to it.
Motion by Gorski?
Second.
Nelson, second. Any discussion? Paul?
So why I wanted it pulled out and mention that the Cow is because I don't feel personally, as somebody that's responsible for going out for bid and getting quotes on exact same type of products and they're similar products like, solutions like this, to me, it doesn't fit my interpretation of the statute and other people's interpretations of the, of the statute. Plus, even if it did, I still would have gone out for competitive pricing and enlisted it and kind of speaking to what John was talking about in terms of policy, it's just good policy to kind of shop around. I don't have any problem with the vendor or the vendor services or the, or the specific solution, it's just that, pretty much, I'm covering my own backside because I have to do this for a living and another life, and I just want to make sure I'm just going by the same rules that I would apply to myself here, so, nothing, no hard feelings against anybody here, just, I just covering myself, so.
Any other discussion?
I, I will join Paul in voting no.
And then.
Sorry, you want to speak? Yes, sir, Dr. Spearman.
Thank you, and just to clarify, the academic affairs team put a committee together and reviewed several different vendors, interviewed them, administration, faculty, and decided that this was the, the best product to move forward. And again, we, what you're not aware of is that we shared this with, well, you made me now, but what I discussed earlier is that we shared this with Robin and Schwartz, they didn't have an opinion at the meeting, but afterwards, they provided opinion and said that this is a, this is the right reason to use the exemption, and so it's okay. And what Mr. Gorski is saying is that he would not have used it this way or moved this process this way.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's where we're at at this point in time, and I just want to make sure everybody has the big picture or all of it, and now I hand it back over to you.
Yes, sir.
So we won't have any legal liability if this goes through, correct? In regards to?
Somebody would have to, somebody would have to challenge it, and the only people that would have, and John or our attorneys could say, the only person that would have.
Standing.
Standing would be one of the other vendors out there, but even I am looking, I look at it and go, it could be interpreted that way, it just, I always err on the side of conservative interpretations of this stuff, because not only do I have to go out for this, I am also the FOIA officer, other whatever, and I don't want to have to deal with going back and explaining the whole history of how something got here. If we just go out and do it, then it's already done and it's out in public, so, I don't have a problem, and I, I'm sure y'all went through a thing, you just didn't pull under lock out of a name out of a hat at a luncheon and go, it's under lock, let's have lunch, okay? I'm sure that didn't happen, and I have no problem with the vendor, it's just, I'm just, for me, and in my, right now, going into the fall, doing big purchases like this, just covering myself.
I guess I should have been looking at our attorney when I said that, do we have any legal liability in regards to going forward? It's proper, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Nelson?
No.
Michaels?
Yes.
Simpson? Gorski? Kennedy, yes. Trojan?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
So we have three?
Three to two.
Yes, and two noes. Motion passes. Okay, we're done with all the voting items. Is there any new business?
No new business at this time.
Any unfinished business?
So unfinished, no.
And we'll have the updates, starting with the president's update.
Good evening, trustees. Due to the vital role community colleges play in providing accessible and affordable higher education opportunities to a diverse range of students, ICCB wants to ensure that adequate and equitable funding for community colleges is realistic in Illinois. Therefore, ICCB will convene a working group of key community college stakeholders to examine community college funding. The charge of the work, excuse me, the charge of the working group is to develop a set of recommendations to the board aimed at improving the adequacy and, and equity of funding for community colleges in Illinois. As a part of this working group, two subcommittees will also be convened that will meet virtually and will provide an opportunity for additional stakeholder input to the larger group. The adequacy subcommittee will examine the current funding mechanisms for community colleges in Illinois, taking into account factors such as enrollment, demographics, program offerings, as well as emerging, new, and other innovative instructional delivery methods and geographical distribution. The equity subcommittee will assess the potential impact of existing funding mechanisms on educational equity, considering the needs of underrepresented populations, low-income students, rural communities, first-generation students, and other marginalized groups. Trustee Kudia, interim dean of students, Dr. Lavinus Muhammad, and I were selected by ICCB to serve on this committee. As we learn more, we'll be sure to share this information with the board. The next item I'd like to report on is more of a reminder that Tuesday, September third, is Fall Professional Development Day. Each of you received a schedule for the day, please feel free to attend any or all of the day's activities. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions of Dr. Spearman? Hearing none, we'll move on to the leadership team updates, so.
We'll start at the left, work our way to the right.
Greetings, trustees. Last month, we hosted a reception for Dr. Amy Diaz, the 2024 recipient of the Teresa Palet Gilbert Distinguished Service Award. The distinguished accolade chosen by PACE leadership honors a commitment to social justice through acts and advocacy. Dr. Amy Diaz was recognized for her work in diversity, equity, and inclusion during her years at R V C. She was a founding member of the PACE committee in 2008 and continued her efforts as president of Gateway Community College in Phoenix, Arizona. Special thanks to Lamise Diab, one of the co-chairs for PACE, the D E I executive secretary, Isadora Madrano, D E I specialist Ted Curry, President Spearman for giving that outstanding proclamation and Dr. Diaz's honor, and everyone else who contributed to making this occasion a huge success. Faculty and staff from the R V C Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and PACE will be meeting virtually with the Gateway Community College Diversity Team in September 2024 to explore opportunities for future collaborations. Second, R V C welcomed Eric Brown, who started in his position as the ADA Compliance Coordinator on Monday, July 29th, 2024. Eric is quickly demonstrating how big of an asset he is in helping us with, helping the campus understand ADA law and how to effectively support students with a disability. I encourage everyone to visit the accessibility at R V C webpage to learn how we can advance accessibility and ADA compliance on campus. Kudos to the marketing and communications team for their prompt edits to the webpage. And then finally, the Viewfinder Campus Culture Survey for Students is designed to help colleges and universities measure and assess diversity and inclusion efforts for students. The instrument was implemented between March 18th and April 5th to all enrolled credit and non-credit students. A total of 507 students participated in the study, representing 8% of the total student population for spring 2024. The Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion will roll out the results and develop recommendations for action items during the fall 2024 semester. Special shout out to D E I specialist Lin Vu and everyone on campus who supported this endeavor. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. First, it's just exciting and an honor to have all of our students and faculty back for the start of the fall semester. It's always great energy as we begin the fall term. While I know we are reporting some fall enrollment numbers a little bit later this evening, VP Senator will do so, I do want to note that our enrollment and registration activities will continue as students make some last-minute schedule adjustments with their faculty support, and, but our primary focus now will be on our late-starting 12- and eight-week courses over the next several weeks. Like to highlight a few ongoing efforts and activities that support our student veterans. Our Veterans Coordinator, Melana Herman, does a wonderful job providing these services, serving a little over 100 students this fall at Rock Valley that are registered as veterans. Rock Valley was recently supported a transfer student leaving Rock Valley College as part of the ROTC Transfer Waiver Program. Mr. Edgar Zanko, R V C graduate, will be attending Illinois State University this fall. After completing his training, he will enter the Army as an officer, and we don't do that very often, in fact, I think that's the first time we've had an ROTC scholarship winner heading off from Rock Valley College to another transfer institution. The Student Veterans Club has also been partnering lately with the Winnebago County Assistance Commission, and they will going forward result in a veteran service officer making themselves available at Rock Valley College once a month on campus, so our veteran students that need to file claims or follow up on claims can have those services available to them here at the campus without they needing to travel. Next, over this past summer, our upward bound program served over 33 students over six weeks. Throughout the program, students took part in several notable excursions and activities. They attended Student Leadership Conference at Southern Illinois University Carbondale, explored the NIU campus, experienced a cultural tour of the Anderson Japanese Garden. At the program's conclusions, students presented an All About Me project, which highlighted their personal backgrounds, identities, and future goals. The program concluded with a three-night college tour to New Orleans. The trip included visits to the National World War II Museum and its 4D presentation, Beyond All Boundaries, a tour of the University of New Orleans, and a guided tour of the French Quarter, and much more. Kudos to our program leaders, Dr. Elaine Desard, Melana Rotman, Cheryl Young, Melissa Lawson, Sarah Logoman, Muliko Tambawwe, Nasrata Zarcha, and Pensalan Williams, and Christian Hoag. Quickly and finally, provide an update on F1 visa students attending Rock Valley College this fall. At present, we have 33 full-time students attending Rock Valley College, representing 20 different countries. We're excited to have them on our campus, enriching our college experience and sharing their diverse perspectives with our community. Special thank you to Tasha Niswander, our intercultural student coordinator, for helping welcome all of these students to campus. And that's my report. Yes, sir. And that's my report. Yes, sir.
Are these students from the countries, or?
Yes, sir.
They just happen to be?
They are from those countries. Oftentimes, the relationships are made with high school exchange programs and families. It's usually how most of our international F1 students make their way to Rock Valley.
How are they housed? Who takes care of them?
Many are housed, honestly, with friends and family that they've made connections with during their high school exchange programs.
Host families.
And we have host families as well that volunteer.
That's quite interesting.
Yeah. It's a great program.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Moving, move on. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. We'd like to acknowledge and thank Justin Severson, our Staff Professional Development Specialist, for coordinating our first Golden Eagles Leadership Academy cohorts with the support of Human Resources Staff and our campus partners. Our Blue cohort was comprised of emerging leaders and managers who were able to apply to the eight-month program and participate once a month, learning about a variety of leadership development concepts. The cohort consisted of 10 RBC employees and culminated July 26th. The next Blue cohort, which we're excited to welcome, begins November of this year. Our Gold cohort was comprised of emerging deans and directors nominated by their vice president. The first cohort consisted of seven RBC employees who completed the program June 28th. The group requested to extend their experience six months and participate in a capstone project to apply the knowledge and skills learned to the advancement of the RBC campus. The next Gold cohort begins October 18th. And finally, we have been working collaboratively with Ann Kerwitz from the President's Office and Robin Schwartz to review the Board Policy Manual. We look forward to presenting the results of the review of Section 1 next month. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. As Dr. Pyer mentioned, we have an enrollment update for you tonight. Very exciting news. As of today, we've exceeded the budget by 2%, and we're 99% to the stretch goal. Of course, we will still have some fluctuations as we settle in on our census date, which is the 14th day of classes, and that will be the number that's submitted officially to ICCB. As you know, then, we continue to add enrollments with late start classes, so I do think we're in good shape to maintain these goals. And much kudos goes to people across the campus, including the Student Affairs Team, the Academic Affairs Team, and Marketing, and everyone who helps to get our students and keep our students enrolled.
As I will explain in my reports later, I will want to zero in on the engineering enrollment, but I'll explain it as I get to my.
Sure. And we do plan on March bringing back the program investment report too, so keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Okay, next, next.
Dr. Smith, you're next.
I am next.
Oh, you are next.
Yeah. So, good evening, trustees. Tonight, I really want to highlight some of the great work that is occurring on our campuses. So on Thursday, April, or August, excuse me, August 15th, we have the privilege of onboarding seven new faculty in the areas of aviation, business, chemistry, and nursing. This was the first time we were able to meet as a team, and professional development will continue throughout the entire tenure process. Kudos to Dr. Kim Blanchard and her team as they are leading the efforts to make sure that we onboard our new faculty adequately. Then on Wednesday, August 21st, faculty were invited to participate in the inaugural Fall Faculty Forum. Many faculty and academic staff took time out of their busy first week of classes to discuss teaching and learning at RBC. It was an extremely rich conversation, and we look forward to holding such conversations every semester. Lastly, I wanted to thank everyone, faculty, staff, and administration, for the hard work that you, we have all done that allowed the first week of classes to run smoothly and without chaos. This is no easy feat, and a lot of preparation, planning, and sleepless nights are required to make this happen. So I am so proud to work at RBC.
Good evening. First, I want to announce that the Financial Services Department, we have completed the fieldwork associated with our FY '24 audit for both the college audit and the single audit. If it was not for the dedication of the Accounting Services Department and the support from Accounts Payable, Purchasing, Payroll, and Leanna Davis, the Executive Director of Financial Aid, this would not have been accomplished in less than 60 days from our fiscal year end. So towards the end of June, this brings me to this point, you should have received a standard SAS 99, the Fraud Risk Assessment Inquiry. SICAGE is awaiting the response from five board members yet. So those of you who we are waiting upon, in front of you is a copy of the questionnaire. You can complete it and drop it in the mail in the envelope provided. That will go directly to SICAGE. You can seal it in an envelope and give it to Ann Kerwitz, and she will see that it is sent to SICAGE. And also, there are instructions on how to email or fax it directly to SICAGE. Your responses are confidential and will determine if further audit procedures are needed. From the Rock Valley College Foundation, I want to share that the RBC Foundation team will present at the Annual Guidance Counselors Fair on September 26th to promote the RBC Foundation scholarships. This event is hosted by the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois, is one of their most important scholarship publicity events of the year. The attendees are school guidance counselors from across the four county service area, and they will share their scholarship opportunities for the next academic year, share critical application dates, answer questions, and will continue to foster relationships with high schools and the area guidance counselors so that RBC can continue to remain a first-choice option for our high school students. And one other thing I want to share with the board is that over the weekend, I was out at the website for the Illinois Attorney General Charitable Trust page and happened to look up Rock Valley College Foundation. There, they had a chart that illustrated the assets of the foundation, and I want to point out that they have grown from 9.2 million at 630, 2013, to nearly 18 million 10 years later at June 30th of 2023. It demonstrates that the foundation team's ability to connect between the community and the college and the students is great. Thank you.
So it is growing, and that's a good sign. Now we have to make sure we have enough students. Yes, sir, John?
Just so I'm clear here, our foundation endowment is 18 million. Is that what you just said?
They have $18 million in financial assets, yes.
Was that, are the assets like cash in the bank or invested in the stock market, or?
They're the.
Is it cash money is what I mean, not assets, you know?
It, the bulk of it is investments, as in, it could be equities, it's bonds, it's assorted investments that are handled by their advisor.
Savard manages the investments.
Correct.
And what's the dollar amount of our investments, is my question.
I don't have that right now. It's at my fingertips.
Could, could you provide that?
I can see.
Thank you.
I mean, it is a good sign that the fund balance has been growing these last 10 years, certainly. And when I see some of the writings coming from ICTA about Western Illinois University and the Chicago College System and one or two other universities locally in Illinois, basically having serious financial trouble and laying off people, I think, you know, the fact that our foundation is growing its assets is a, is a good sign. Anyway, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to, who's next?
I just want to acknowledge that Dr. Smith mentioned Dr. Kim Blanchard, but she's always here, but I don't know if all of you know her. So wave so they know who Dr. Kim Blanchard is.
Hey, Kim.
Thank you for what you do, and we just want to acknowledge you. So we appreciate you.
Okay, that's the leadership team done?
Yes.
And now we got the ICTA report, John?
Meeting coming up September 13th. Hopefully, Kristin can go with me. And it's just a standard meeting.
Regular quarterly meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else on ICTA?
Uh, no.
Hearing none. We'll have trustee comments. We'll start with Paul Gorski.
I keep, I'm being told I'm not supposed to worry about staff and just worry about my direct hire and then attorney and the SICAGE. So I don't recognize any of you when I'm out and about, so maybe other than Ann. I bumped into Ann a couple times out there. But sorry if I don't recognize you past Ian Woodmans or something. Sorry. I've been told not to, so thanks. That's it.
You say you don't see him in Woodmans? Is that what you said?
I've only seen a couple people at Woodmans, and I say, I think I know them from the college. But then I'm also getting old. I've been involved in local stuff for 25 years, so it could be anywhere, so. That's it. Thanks.
Am I go? I go.
Oh, I'm doing this.
Well, no, you, you got a report coming up. We'll do it after we're done with trustee comments. Richard?
No comments, sir.
Kristin?
I don't have anything tonight.
John?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I always comment on something.
No.
The, I, I remember campaigning in 2017, and I remember being told that our assets in the foundation were 200. I thought it was 200 million, and they said it was 200,000. So, you know, I'm anxious to see what the current foundation assets are. Honestly, I wouldn't be happy till it's 100 times that.
Well, we're welcome to ideas of how to generate that.
The, and Bob, you and I will talk.
It takes money, and it takes donors.
Right.
Is what I guess.
And we, we, we have a lot of successful graduates.
And last year, we, we provided about $650,000 in scholarships, and this year, we're on pace to provide approximately $700,000 in scholarships.
And I'll continue that report on my foundation report. You know, and I want to make a point when I get there, but anyway, okay, my trustee comments, I got two. Number one, the operations people need a good round of applause. The parking lot looks wonderful. I mean, it's all.
Thank you.
Black and the yellow lines, and it's pretty nice driving in with that kind of a image. It's very positive. But also, second item is I did participate in two student welcome events, one hour each day, Monday and Tuesday. Of course, it was 3:30, and it was kind of quiet, and it gave me pause. It's worse, and I was in, in front of the WTC building, which is the engineering building, and maybe it was the hour, I don't know, but there were few students coming through looking for any kind of help. The ones that did come, they knew what they were doing, but I hope that it does not reflect negatively on engineering enrollment. There were three gentlemen from Lake Forest. They were architects, and they first asked if it would be okay to park where they did, which I said, no, it's free. But they wanted to go see the starlight structure. They heard about it, and so they saw it, and I says, that's free too. So that's my.
They're from Lake Forest. You should have lifted at least a little money on.
So anyway, that's my reports. We are now for this trustee, student trustee report.
Hello, everyone. I hope I am doing good today. This is my second report. Obviously, we started our first few weeks into school semester, so that's very exciting. I've attended a few student events throughout the campus, including the breakfast, which was the 22nd, and then the welcoming week today. Got these wonderful pins that were made by Mrs. Thompson over there. She did a great job designing them. We have the volley, women's volleyball that starts August 22nd at 6:00 PM, and a few other games, including the baseball team that starts September 6th at 2:00 PM. Hopefully, everyone can attend. But so, some of my goals that I want to include or want to pursue at Rock Valley is adding ASL. I've talked to Dr. Smith about adding or seeing the possibility with that, and hopefully, that will come true eventually, within a few months or years of that. But that would be nice. Adding more beautification to our campuses, including native and wildlife that are found in the state of Illinois, as well as pursuing voter and civic engagement through our campus, hopefully providing higher voter turnout that our students can participate in, including consolidated general and primary elections that we could do. So that's pretty much my report, but obviously, thank you so much for listening.
Yes, sir, John?
Yes.
Well, I might suggest to our student representative that September, or I believe it's, isn't it the 10th? The debate that one combatant is threatening to not show up, but he will. And maybe the students should have a big TV and invite all the students to come and watch the debate. It's a.
Where will that be? At your house, John?
It could be.
Won't be mine.
I was thinking more on the student center, so.
Oh, I see.
So, and I'm sure that the president could find somewhere in the budget to have some pizza or something for people.
They have it. Student life.
The way we look at it is it's our budget, and you're our employee, so I think you can help this poor student representative.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to demand that we go out for bid for that pizza then, okay?
There you go.
Yeah. Oh, no, it's a special service, believe it. There's pizza, and then there's some pizza. Pietros.
Anything else? Okay, now the RBC Foundation report, which me, as Dr. Spearman mentioned, we do have this fiscal year 700,000 available. But 271,000 is still available to award. In other words, we've already awarded, what, 5, 430,000, whatever the difference between 700 and 271. Of the 271 that's still available, 149,000 is restricted to engineering students. In other words, because the name of the scholarship is directed towards engineering, that's the only place where those scholarship dollars can go. And my concern that I would raise is that are there enough engineering students enrolling? Because there's money out there for these young people, and how come we have so much money left over for, for engineering in particular? So anyway, the other two items, on October 17th, the foundation is hosting the annual alumni and retiree breakfast, which will be held at the atrium, and the idea behind it, of course, is to keep the retirees and the alumni up to date on what's going on with the hopes that they would be continually donors or maybe become new donors. And of course, on November 8th, the Foundation Annual Scholarship Luncheon, which will be held at the Radisson, all the trustees will be invited. And this brings together the donors and the recipients, and if you ever want to see a very heartwarming event, this is one, if you can attend it, that you should try to attend it. So that's my RBC report, a foundation report, rather. Any questions? Yes, sir, John?
What day is Election Day this year?
The 5th, November 3rd.
No, it's November 5th.
5th, okay, thanks. Just before it. Anything else? Freedom of FOIA report? Yes, sir.
I had one. When does the scholarship deadline end?
It's September the 4th.
Is that a Thursday or a Monday?
It's, well.
Some, some day.
Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, I think.
Wednesday.
Next week, Wednesday.
Bob, of, of the 271,000 still available, is that, is that restricted income? Does it go by FAFSA, in other words, or? Do you understand my question? In other words, is it just plain, you apply for the scholarship, you qualify, you got it? Or are there financial requirements for it?
Well, of the 271, 149 is specifically for engineering.
Correct.
So the difference then.
My goal there would be to call a press conference and say, come on in.
Well, if you remember, the previous student trustee made it a point to go around, talking around the campuses about engineering, about scholarships in general, to encourage them to sign up. So there's money available. So why is it?
I'm thinking about the high schools or, you know, anybody within shouting distance.
Well, I think it's be the.
We're desperate.
For the most part, scholarships are being awarded to RBC students rather than high school students.
So students apply, they enroll at RBC, and then they also, after that, they complete the application for the scholarship. Brittany has done a pretty good job of reaching out to engineering faculty, letting them know about it and so that we can identify students to send it to them as well. So she is doing that. Each year, for the last two or three years, she's been doing this second chance scholarship because so many of our community college students still enroll at the. because so many of our community college students still enroll at the last second, so she's still trying to get a fair amount of them. Engineering is an issue, but I share with you why I think some of our numbers are dwindling in engineering before. So, I think you're aware of that.
Paul?
Thank you. So, how many people, if you're targeting, and I don't know who to all look at, if you're targeting existing RVC students, and I'm talking about the specific, the engineering program, since that's what Bob was brought up and was trying to bring out, how many people in the existing program do we have would be eligible for those dollars? How many people are in the program just ballpark?
Couple hundred, maybe?
Couple hundred?
All in?
All in?
NIU students?
So...
Two plus two NIU, that would probably include them.
Is there anything from stopping us from just getting the application packet and just having them hand it to all the students in the classes and say, here, take it and try, you know, and then apply for it? Or is that non-productive or...
The application is an online application. I'm not sure if there's a paper version, first and foremost, but I believe we've done quite a bit of outreach to the individual students and courses in those areas. Short of filling out the application for them, we can always try to do more, don't get me wrong, but I think Brittany's team, the marketing team, others, or last spring, I know our student trustee and other students went around many places to try to promote this to our students to complete the application.
And we do this as part of our financial aid outreach, FAFSA nights and things of that nature. So, we are pushing this all year round and making them aware of it all year round.
Okay. Other than that, than just a sheet of paper with a QR code that would send them straight to the application site. And I'm just doing this, you know, because Bob's, you know, Bob's making an issue of it, and I've talked to my son, who's taking some classes and the like, and I've asked him about it, and he's like, well, yeah, I've heard about it. And I'm just like, why wouldn't you apply for the money?
That's right.
I still got to do it.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Otherwise, we'll go to the Freedom FOIA report. Anything?
I wanted to just say, trustee Gorski, that we were committed to Dean of CTE to work with faculty because faculty members need to work with student services to do some recruitment events to somebody graduating seniors because as subject matter specialists, they could bring alive engineering, especially in areas like mechatronics, which a student services person, you know, they would have some general knowledge, but they wouldn't have all the insights in terms of scope of salary locally, nationally, you know, what are the prospects for all the professions possible for a particular field in engineering? Like, we have manufacturing engineering technology, we have EET, we have mechatronics. So, the dean and I working on a plan with faculty to kind of revamp how we actually do outreach and trying to target going to high schools, the graduating seniors, to see if we could capitalize on that market true.
Okay. And that speaks to what trustee Nelson was saying, you know, going out of the high school and like, but yeah, I mean, and I don't know what motivates people. I mean, so I'm 61. You hand me a piece of paper or even send me, you know, an email or something or a link, I'll do it, but an app or YouTube or Instagram, I wouldn't do it. But I know my daughter and my son, that's, if they saw something like that, they'd probably scan it and go to it and visit the site, you know? I'm just like, I don't know what the, how you tweak people enough to take that step. I mean, because if they just realize, it isn't that hard, just ask. And the worst thing you can say is no. I mean, and the best thing is, you get it, and you don't have to pay far out of pocket. So, so, sorry. I guess that's my trustee comment.
Any other comments on this point? If not, we'll go to FOIA report. Anything to report on that?
No.
Nope? Okay. We're not going to have a closed session, is that right?
Correct.
So, therefore, the date of the next committee, the whole meeting, September 10th, 2024, 5:15 PM. Meeting will be held in the PAR, room number 0214, located in the ERC on the main campus. Date of the next regular board meeting, September 24, 2024, 5:15. The meeting will be held same place, PAR, room 0214, located in the ERC on the main campus. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. So, move, so second, second, second.
Nelson and Gorski.
All right.
Rule call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Trojan?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.